Welcome, everyone. We'll call this March 12th, 2024 meeting of council to order at 6:00 P. M. This meeting will be held in a hybrid manner where members of council, staff, and the public can participate electronically. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded and will be available on the township website. Notice is hereby provided that under the authority of the Municipal Act 2001, and in accordance with Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, that all information attained is considered part of the public record. All rules apply to the meeting as if everyone is attending in person, and if there is a problem with the technology impacting the proceedings of the meeting, the meeting may be recessed. So I would ask that anyone that can to rise for the National Lamp. We acknowledge that we are being hosted on the industrial lands of the Haudenosaunee, Mississauga, and Omaa-Weninni people. We acknowledge and welcome the presence of all Indigenous peoples, including the Métis, Inuit, and other First Nations from across this vast land who also make this place home. The lands we are on today are recognized in the Two-Row-Wampum Dish with One Spoon Treaty, Treaty 27, and the Crawford Purchase. Next item is the adoption of the agenda. We have not had any additions or modifications to the agenda. There's a recommendation there. Is there a mover who would like to present a motion? Councillor Willis. Read the motion, please. Thank you. So moved, seconded by Councillor Ennis. All in favor? Motion is passed. Declaration of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof. Do we have anyone who with a conflict this evening? Seeing none, we had no closed session this evening, so we move right forward to presentations. And we have Inspector Dave Tovol from the detachment commander of the Lennox and Addington, Ontario Provincial Police, East Region. He's here this evening to provide us with some information. Please come forward. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Great. Good evening, Mayor Haggard, and councillors. Thank you very much for inviting us to this council meeting tonight. It's been a little while. I've been in this position for about a year and a half now. So my first opportunity to speak here, I know we have spoke here as a detachment in the past in the representation of Staff Sergeant Ella Byrne. He sits behind me, one of our newest staff sergeants for our detachment. Staff Sergeant Byrne takes over operations. And supporting that is newly promoted Staff Sergeant Dean Snyder, who's sitting to my right also. So Staff Sergeant Snyder supports the support piece, which is all things administrative, court services, and all of our other specialty services within our detachment. So thank you very much for inviting us this evening. Just maybe by a quick introduction, as the detached commander for Lennox and Addington, coming to this position about a year and a half ago, I come from a number of bureaus within the OPP organized crime. I was a prosecutor, tech support, manager of friends identification, and I'm in my 33rd year of policing. So I'm really enjoying my opportunity of working here in Lennox and Addington, supporting our communities. This evening, I will report on our three pillars. Everything we do is all about road safety, our investigative excellence, and our engagement with our communities. So I think it's most appropriate to speak to each of those areas, give a bit of a recap of what we did in 2023, and speak to where we are year to date here in 2024. Welcome any questions anytime, so feel free to interrupt me, but we'd be happy to answer any questions at the end also. So we'll start off just by speaking to the traffic collisions and just providing you a bit of an oversight of what's keeping us busy in this community. All the stats I'm going to speak to are specific to Loyalist Township and in the surrounding area here. So in 2023, as far as the motor vehicle collision counts were between 2022 and 2023, we are proud that throughout the 2022-23 period, we had no fatalities through this area, which is quite remarkable given our presence on the 401. Personal injuries were up, personal injury collisions. So these were reportable collisions where an individual or more were injured as a result. They did increase from 12 to 22 in 2023. I will note, though, that of the 22 collisions in 23, eight of those are on the 401. And we have seen post-pandemic that the traffic on our 401 has increased substantially. In particular, we've seen quite an increase in commercial motor vehicles, and we attribute a lot to that, to the expansion of the ports in Montreal and the on-time, our on-demand delivery, which is really changing the way our roads are looking and the number of commercial motor vehicles and our attention to commercial motor vehicle enforcement. Property damage collisions were 122 in 22, and in 23, they're up quite a bit to 245, 87 of those being on the 401. And again, we attribute the increase of the property damage. So this is any collision where there's significant damage, and the Highway Traffic Act does stipulate that you must report it. So we do see, we attribute the trend, the increase there, again, to the increase in traffic, which is quite substantial based on our pandemic numbers, where we saw quite a decrease actually along the 401 and in some of our arteries too. And a lot of that, a lot of those factors are also the number of people who are working from home and the likes. Year to date, within the Loyalist area, though, we really haven't seen much of a change from this year to last year. Our numbers are pretty consistent. Through the first couple of months, we've had three personal injury and only 42 property damage collisions. In 2023, throughout the entire Lennox and Addington area, we're happy to report that our collisions, our personal injury collisions are down by 26%, which is quite a significant number. Distracted driving, speeding remain the main causal factors, and those are our primary focus pieces with our officers when we're out there. We are concerned with the number of impaired drivings in this township. In 2022, we had 15 impaired charges in this township, and they've increased in 2023 to 24, so almost twice those numbers. What's concerning is that in 2022, 15 of those six were on the 401, but of the 24 and 23, only one was on the 401, which speaks to the number of impaired charges that are happening on our roads within the community that are not on the 401. So we have shifted a lot of our focus to what we call mandatory alcohol screening, which is a legislative authority that we have as police officers to set up what we, what you would commonly know as ride checks. But often, ride checks, we meet, we greet, we ask questions of the drivers and on the go. Mandatory alcohol screening legislation allows police officers to demand a roadside breath sample from people. And through those efforts, we are actually seeing that we're taking people off the road for three-day suspensions for having a certain level of alcohol in our system, and we have had over 80 charges too. So we are focusing a lot within our communities based on some of these statistics. To speak now to the investigative excellence piece, which is really, it's about our violent crime, our property crime, and all those other police duties that we do, which are aside from the motor vehicle collisions or anything that has to do with traffic enforcement. So in 2022 to 2023, we did see an increase in the violent crime piece within the Loyalist Township area. Our sexual assaults remain somewhat consistent. We had 23, 22 reported throughout both those years, respectively, but our assault where we saw is where we saw the increase. We had 49 in 2022 and a significant increase of 73 in the year of 23, and 50% of those were attributed to domestic disputes, which I will speak to when I talk about the other operational pressures that we have and other crimes against persons. And to speak to what I refer to when we say other crimes against persons, so we had an increase of from 33 to 61. So when we talk about that, what we're talking about is landlord-tenant, mental health, the number of mental health calls, trespass-to-property-act type calls, domestics, suspicious persons, noise complaints. So those are the other drivers of service in the area. And just to look at the violent crimes for this year, we are down in this community by 71% in the first couple of months from where we were year to date last year. So we have seen a significant decrease in the assaults. We have seen a decrease in the domestic disturbances we're attending in that too. So those are good numbers, and we're certainly hoping that they stay on track. With regards to property crimes throughout the last 2023 year, we saw a 4% reduction in property crimes from 2022 to 2023. When we talk about property crimes, we're looking at break-and-enters, which are in the 20, we had 21 last year. Theft unders, we had 121. Fraud, 71. Mischiefs, 58. So those are the sort of things when we talk about property crimes, where, again, the numbers are somewhat consistent, but they were down 4%. And again, what's promising for year to date in the first couple of months of this year, with regards to the property crimes, we're down 65% in the same categories. So our theft overs have gone from 15 to three in the same period. Our theft unders have gone from 25 to nine. And last year, we did see a significant increase in theft from vehicles, which really drives that theft-under piece. Our auxiliary unit went out and did the lock-it, lose-it campaign and distributed pamphlets throughout the communities into some of the plaza areas, putting them on cars. And after that, we saw a significant decrease in the thefts from vehicles. So that was a real, real promising and well worth the efforts of those volunteers, who I will speak to in the latter part of this presentation. So within Lennox and Addington detachment, we have an auxiliary unit of approximately 10 volunteers who contributed, well, in 2023, they contributed 4,120 hours to LNA area. In Loyalist Township itself, they contributed 1,900 hours throughout 2023, 400 of those being community service and 1,500 of them being patrols. So on behalf of that group, I'll share some of the community events that they did attend last year so that they can be recognized in this community. The Family Fishing Day in Amherst Island, the Odessa Fair, the Classroom to Community, the Napanee Touch the Truck, Back to the Farm Ride, Loyalist Truck Retreat, Amherstview Christmas Parade, Remembrance Day, the Amherstview Christmas Lights, the Bath Mary Main Street, to name a few. So we have a very, very good auxiliary. I'd like to say that they're probably the best auxiliary program that we have in the provincial within our OPP, and they're led by one staff sergeant, two sergeants, and a number of volunteers. Again, these are all volunteer hours. And these members, they do training every couple of weeks. They come in for mandatory training and meetings, and they're a big part of providing those extra services to our community. So when we see things like theft unders from vehicles and that, they're a great unit to engage, and they're quite quick to come out and interact with our community. So I'm sure a lot of people in here probably have seen them. Every time I talk about our program, people always have an event that they recall seeing their presence. A couple of things that we've done this year, we introduced CAMSafe in this community with the partnership with your community, which is a great, great piece. And when we look at thefts, theft unders, those mischiefs in our communities, in order to get ahead of those, we look at ways that we can work with our community and try to prevent those crimes from occurring. Things like the CAMSafe program, which a lot of us may recall as being things like the Block Parent and within our communities, but the CAMSafe is the new air. And for those who aren't familiar with it, we encourage anyone that has doorbell cams or any other type of cam on their residence or business to register it with CAMSafe. So that's C.A.M.S.A.F.E. It's an OPP-supported program. It's been adopted by a number of communities here in Ontario. And what it allows is the police of that jurisdiction to look on CAMSafe on their map to see which houses or which businesses in the area may have some video footage, which could assist us in any investigation, whether it be a theft from a vehicle or a break-and-enter in a house or any other incident that may happen in the neighborhood. So we're pleased to see that Loyalist has endorsed this and that people, our community, is registering. We are seeing an increase of people registering for CAMSafe. So that's very promising, and we as police really appreciate that cooperation. Some of the other services that we have here in the community that are OPP, but they're not part of Lennox and Addington, but you have the real privilege, and we do too, as the detachment, to have these support services available to us, is our emergency response team. That's a provincial program where these officers respond to containment-type calls or missing persons. They're a quick reactive type team. They're stationed here in our area. We have a couple of emergency response or ERT members. Again, they're a provincial asset. We have our tactical response unit, again, a provincial asset. They're more for any calls that involve weapons or barricaded persons. They're located in Odessa. We have a canine presence here, provincial asset located within Lennox and Addington, who's positioned here and quick to respond. We have a provincial traffic team too, which is based out of Odessa. The team is split between Quinny West and Odessa. Approximately four members of that team are positioned within our area and work out of the Odessa detachment, the Loyalist area. And you see their presence in the 401 or any of our main arteries within our community. Again, a provincial asset that supports our detachment. We have our own dedicated marine program. Our region here in East Region is different from the other regions in the OPP in that we do dedicate an operator all season long to the boat, so we're on the water at all times. And we also have the luxury of having our SAVE, which is a snowmobile ATV vessel enforcement unit, which is a provincial asset based out of Smith Falls. But in the summertime, they position two officers and a boat in our community here. So we have two boats who are active on our waterways within Lennox and Addington at all times. And then we have our community street crimes unit that are based out of the Napanee office, but provide support to this entire area. And they're looking at things like drugs, break-and-enters, any property crime investigations, and they wouldn't be a noticeable presence. They're more of a crime-type unit who are plainclothes and they provide a lot of support, in particular with the drug issues and doing the warrants and staying on top of all that for us. So that's the CSCU team, and we have four members with a sergeant dedicated to that program. The other piece I'll ask Staff Sergeant Snyder to speak to is our MCERT. So it's the Mobile Crisis Response Team, and it's a partnership that we have that supports operations. Maybe Dean, I can get you to speak to that?
So the MCERT team is a partnership between the OPP provincially and various community mental health groups and the various mental health support agencies across the province. In KFLA, we have a team of three members that are embedded at the detachment in Napanee. Their mandate is to work directly with police in responding to incidents that involve a mental health element or an addictions element. Their mission or their mandate is to attempt to prevent recidivism or repeat of calls and incidents involving addictions and mental health that get to the point of a crisis that requires police to attend and that maintains or reduces the degree to which we have to spend time engaging with those incidents that can be diverted into the mental health stream and into support services. So this is part of the OPP's general provincial mental health support, community support strategy. These workers will respond to calls with our officers, and they will work, they are professionally trained field mental health workers. They'll engage with members of the community, and they'll also then continue to follow up the members of the community to provide support services and to attempt to keep them engaged with the healthcare system as opposed to having to, or being allowed to be sort of fall off the radar, and then the situation escalates to the point where it becomes a police matter again. One of the initiatives we started recently is engaging our MCERT members with our other municipal partners like Fire and Bylaw, so that when they're engaged in different duties that they have to perform for safety reasons in the community, if it appears that there's a mental health element with the community member, the idea is to engage these field workers and support those activities as well, so that it actually will prevent a situation from even potentially becoming such that engages police. So that's just an example of what that team does, but this is, again, supported or a provincial program that we're quite proud that we have at LNA and that we have for this community.
Yeah, thanks, Dean. And in the in the big piece there is the fact that they attend on average one call in this community every day, around 30 calls a month. It's it's quite an asset and quite an enhancement to the service we're able to provide to those vulnerable people within our community. The other thing that you will have noticed, and I hope our community has recognized, in the past year, we've opened up the office here in Loyalist Township also. Now, it is open through regular business hours, Monday to Friday. It is staffed, and it is open to the public. And we do have a footprint there. We do have police officers there. We have an admin assistant there to help with any of those community needs. And within the OPP, we also have what we've called the Service Delivery Model. And what that is, is we've worked with the, our commissioners, worked with the government to identify a true true numbers, I guess, for providing adequate police services within our community. And what that means to Lennox and Addington and your community is that we will be getting more officers over the seven-year rollout. We're in year two right now, so we have a few more years to go yet, but it means for us, and I don't want to say the exact numbers, but it's a significant enhancement in and the reason I don't want to say the exact numbers is because I don't know the exact number, but I can tell you it's north of 19 more officers for our area. So we're excited about that. Again, it's rolled out gradually over a period of time. And as that does roll out within our community, as your detached commander, I'm very alive to the fact that this community is growing and that we will be increasing our footprint at the local office here and increase the number of officers who are on the road in this area, as well as in our northern Kaladar area and the Napanee area. So so that's the Service Delivery Model that is being rolled out across the province each year. And subject any questions from yourselves? I'm more than happy to answer anything, and if we've missed anything, I can speak to.
Councillor, any questions at this time? Are you, do you have more to present, or are you?
No, sir.
No? Okay. So if there's any questions or comments, please. Being none, thank you very much for being here this evening and providing the information. I will say that we do appreciate the presence of the OPP in the township and the support that we receive from them. You had mentioned some of the events. Virtually every event I go to, there is officers and auxiliary. The auxiliary are a huge asset to us locally. And it's, they interact with the, especially the children. Like, it's great to see the children become so comfortable with the officers so that they know when something goes wrong, they know that it's okay to go and talk to them, and that's huge, I think. There's also the cars, of course, and the equipment that shows up as well at the events. And I am pleased to hear that people are registering for CAMSafe. I was hoping they would, and I'm glad to see that they are. I think that could potentially be a huge asset for us as well, huge time saver, and be a great asset for you and your investigations. And also, it was great to have the Odessa office reopen again. That was a quite a boost for the community. It was really appreciated. And it, just to have it there and have people know that they can go in and have any issues dealt with was a big thing for the community to receive. And it always amazes me the number of provincial assets that are available locally. It, there's been different times. I've heard that the response time of being able to bring in additional assets when needed certainly makes the outcome a lot better. We'll put it that way. And it's great to have all of those available so close. So with that, I'll, Councillor Prudential?
I'll move the recommendation. Is that where you're going?
Okay, yes, recommendation.
Presentation from Inspector Dave Tovol, detachment commander of Lennox and Addington, Ontario Provincial Police, be received.
Thank you. So moved, seconded by Councillor Bubrick. Any comments from the mover, seconder? Anyone else? I already did. Call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Thank you very much for being here. Have no statutory public meetings. We go straight to direct or open forum. For the first, the 15 minutes of the meeting has been set aside for open forum. Any individual may address council regarding an item on the agenda, excluding matters under the Statutory Public Meeting section on the same agenda. Each person has three minutes to speak. Anyone wishing to speak can register in advance with the Clerk's Division or raise their hand, and if participating virtually, use the raise hand feature in Zoom. So today, we do have two pre-registered presenters. So we will start with them, and I would ask Erin and Stacy if you'll come forward and you can, you could probably sit right where they were and just make sure when you're speaking to push the button so that the light comes on, and then we can hear you virtually as well.
Hi, I'm Erin Trusell. This is Stacy Waldrum, and we are co-chairs of the Odessa Public School Advisory Council. First and foremost, we'd like to express our gratitude to council for your attention to the critical issue of traffic safety surrounding Odessa Public School. Your dedication and quick attention to the safety and well-being of our community's children is incredibly appreciated. As many of you are aware, there have been a few traffic incidents in the vicinity of the school since last spring. For those who are not, there have been two, thankfully, minor accidents in the near vicinity of the school, both of which happened within morning drop-off or afternoon pickup time. In both cases, luckily, no one was injured, but major damage, both physically to property and emotionally to the child's parents involved, took place. These incidents have raised concerns about the safety of traffic flow. An online survey recently conducted by our School Advisory Council has revealed some staggering statistics. More than 80% of respondents expressed being concerned or very concerned about the safety of our students with regards to traffic. This statistic is not merely a number. It represents the genuine fears and worries of our community. The concerns voiced by our community members are not to be taken lightly. Congestion, erratic traffic flow, speed on Highway 2 specifically, and a lack of adequate parking consistently topped the list of worries conveyed in the survey. These aren't merely inconveniences, but significant hazards to our students. Families shouldn't have to worry about their students getting to school safely.
We recognize that there are significant changes beginning
We recognize that there are significant changes beginning in spring by both the school board and the township to improve improve the road infrastructure, including changes to Highway Two, as well as significant changes to the front of the school and busing area. While we are hopeful that these changes will provide safer options, our concern is the interim until those changes are completed. We may be skipping ahead a bit, knowing that council is planning to to discuss this later in the meeting, but some quick attention to temporary interim methods needs to be considered. We are thankful for the quick action taken by council to study the area and provide recommendations in response to our letter in late December expressing concerns. With the weather warming and with the growth of the walking population of the school, there is already beginning to be an increase of students walking to the school and timely improvements need sorry, and timely improvements to help keep our students safe is appreciated. We're hopeful that a timeline can be provided for those interim changes and we can start to see some improvements like better signage, lighting, or school zone designations. Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing that forward to us. Unfortunately, in this part, there's there's no dialogue, but we've received the information. Thank you very much for bringing it. There's no one else in the in chambers that wishes to speak to this item under open forum. I will go to the virtual audience and ask that if anyone wishes to speak, to please use the raise hand feature.
Through you, Mayor. I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Thank you. So that concludes the open forum portion. Have no delegations. So strategic plan update twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven. So we have the report before us with the recommendation. Someone like to move a recommendation to put the item on the floor. The project?
Recommendation that council receive report re options for committees of council. Sorry, wrong one. Above it, strategic plan recommendation at the report from the chief administrative officer dated March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Read twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven updated loyalist strategic plan be received and that the strategic plan be adopted as presented.
So moved. Do we have a second? Counsel Ennis. Over, any comments or questions?
I have just a few more comments than questions, I guess. To your worship. Communication, the mailings, that'll be just sort of a snapshot or where you can find the information. Is that what the plan is? Plus, obviously, all the social media.
With regard to the plan, are you are you speaking about the rollout of the plan? Yes. We have a certain number of residents who've signed up through our community town halls to get information with regard to this. But also the standard social media will take place, and we will also be presenting the final version at the community town halls that are coming up at the end of April and May.
Just to you again, your worship. So when I read it over, I sort of was looking at different there's seventy-one bullets there through it, the thing. And I I'm trying to put on my my resident shoes now. Only fifteen of those I see as visual for a resident will say, yeah, I understand what that means. Most of its plans, et cetera. There's a accounted nineteen develop or plan, which is fine. Will those plans have a sort of a rollout so that you're obviously not going to do them all at once? But there must be some in there that are strategically easier to attack, let's say. So is there like, I know it's not in the plan, but do you have in some form of whatever the form is, a layout as we're going to do this in nineteen or nineteen, in twenty twenty-four, this in twenty twenty-five? You have something like that wherever it may be stored or?
Yes, we did share with council already the dashboard sort of in draft in draft form. That dash, I'd just like to acknowledge that the strategic plan initiatives currently contained in it is our best plan currently for those things, probably over the next year, eighteen months to two years, that will be at least started during that timeframe to roll out. As discussed in the feedback section, we will be reviewing and revising this plan. It is a static, it's not a static document. It's going to be a living document, so we can come back and say we've completed these. So part of the report back to council will be that dashboard, which includes a timeframe for all of those. So if the plan, it'll it'll give a quarter either this year or next year, when we think that that will be accomplished, including whether or not it requires twenty twenty-five budget to accomplish it or not. So that will be presented to council and available on the strategic plan website for the public to see. If there's a plan that's been accomplished, so we'll be able to report through that for the public through the council reporting. But also on our strategic pan plan page, we will also advise the public of once the rec master plan, for instance, which is in the progress right now. When it becomes comes back to council, it will also be communicated to the public that, hey, the new plans there here, here's what it is. Thanks for your input. And this is where we're at. So ideally, at a minimum, twice we come before council to give you an update of where we're at with those initiatives, whether or not there's any that have to be taken off for various reasons, or if we require future budget for that or where we're at. And at that time, council, we can, there will be new ones through this four-year strategic plan that will be identified as we accomplish those pieces. We'll work on others. The the list of those initiatives right now are what staff think they can accomplish or are already working on. And I just also want to acknowledge that those initiatives are not all of the work which staff does. And generally, it's accepted that strategic plan objectives and initiatives takes takes about is about forty percent of your operational time. So through the other time that staff are working on legislative requirements, regular operations, standard programs. There's a lot of other items that are also going to take place. They just they just don't happen to be put in there. The strategic plan doesn't contain every initiative that staff are working on. But the key pieces that we feel are necessary in order to meet council's key priorities and objectives.
Now putting back on my educator hat. So these reports, the report card that's referred to. I'm just playing devil's advocate here. Should that report card, the format be with the plan? Or is that something that's developed over time? And I'll give you an example. I wouldn't want to have a report come out, let's say, in a year that looks glowing because it was written to fit what was done. You see what I'm saying there? Like, is there going to be sort of a, you know, A, B, C, D, check, 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 or whatever?
I think the report card is probably intended to be just that, is what have we accomplished from the plan to date? The items that are the, as I said, the regular reporting to council will be the dashboard of all of those initiatives. You'll see them and whether or not they've fallen back or timelines are getting adjusted or whatnot. Or even if some things are coming off the table, that's sort of the reporting to council. The official report card to the public will be a document that's much more tailored to share information with the public. So it's easier to understand so that they know what we have accomplished. It's something that will be posted on the website and and probably shared through our community town halls that council is doing with the public there as well. So it hasn't been drafted yet, but it will ideally be similar to the budget document that once the budget's approved and worked on, there will be a document which will kind of share generically. You know, and try to be very informative and easy to digest for the public.
Any other questions or comments for at this time?
If I may, your worship, I just would like to thank council and staff, managers and members of the public who took part in this process over the last six months or so or more, completing surveys. Staff and the public were given surveys to complete. The members of our senior management team worked hard and diligently to try to provide council with an accurate list of initiatives that we can accomplish. We're very proud of this document and proud of of the priorities that council has set and the objectives we set for our community, and we're happy to see where we go from here.
Thank you. I just want to quickly thank staff for the work that went into this. I've worked on other strategic plans, but of course, the first time that I've been in the center chair while one's being done. And it was an educational process for me as well. A lot of work went into it and staff did a great job. And I really appreciate the input that we received from the public so that we can know we're moving in the direction that the residents and the the voters want us to go as well. As well as it's not just a council document, we are trying to achieve what we can for the community. So and I believe we did achieve that. Thank you. So with that, I'll call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Now, just mentioned to the deputy mayor with you being virtual, as I quite often state. If I miss seeing your hand go up because I'm looking to my side instead of straight ahead, please yell out. Options for committees of council. Get that loaded. There you go. Welcome clerk. And is there any additional information at this time? And Director Campbell, welcome to the meeting. Any additional information at this time?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any additional information.
The council before us, we do have a recommendation, and I would ask if we could get a motion put on the floor and the motion presented. So we can discuss. Counsel Willis.
A move that council receive the report options for committees of council from the corporate services, strategy and innovation department dated March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Two, that council approve the draft committee framework and citizen employment policy. Three, that council reestablish the heritage committee. Four, that council establish the new WJ Henderson Recreation Center Renewal Fundraising Committee. Five, that council establish the new commit community grant committee. And as a result, dissolve the following committees. A renewable energy vibrancy fund advisory committee. B renewable energy fund grant review committee, Ward One Subcommittee. Three, renewable energy fund grant review committee, Ward Two, Three Subcommittee. Six, that council dissolve the following committees. A recreation services advisory committee. B, the Amherst Island Recreation Subcommittee. C, the Bath Canada Day Subcommittee. D, the Bath Museum Subcommittee. And E, the mayor's economic development committee. And then seven, that council direct staff to recruit public members for the newly established and reestablished committees in accordance with their terms of reference.
So move. Do we have a second? Deputy Mayor, so seconded. With that mover, any comments, questions?
I do, and it's it's quite a complex recommendation and has been a discussion of many council meetings over the last year and a half. A couple of points. One is the Amherst Island Recreation Subcommittee. My understanding of that, and I have been involved, is that the dissolution of that committee is actually something that has been requested by the committee. They've been working with the recreation staff to develop a situation where they can continue to offer recreation services in the community, but have the freedom to do some things that they might not have been able to do as a township committee, such as holding licensed fundraising events. Is that correct to Adam?
I can answer that question. I just spoke with one of the directors or the representatives from that group today. Through discussions we've had over the last year, the subcommittee with regard to committee structure, it was realized that the the committee, the subcommittee format was not necessarily working for the best, the sort of most efficient use of that. Those volunteer hours, which are are very significant. And so we have worked with the recreation committee on the island to incorporate it as a not-for-profit association. This does open them up for lots of other opportunities for grants, applications, fundraising events. Also protects those volunteers who are significantly putting in their time to offer events on the island. They will be, we are offering assistance to help them incorporate and do that, as well as the municipality is proposing to enter into an agreement with them whereby they can provide those programs more like a service agreement so that we can help finance the group to provide the programs on the island, the recreation programs that that will be brought back before council. But we're working with them on that new arrangement, which will then, as I said, be more efficient. Also avoid liability for the volunteers and allow them essentially to have further programs as an independent not-for-profit group, including permitting with the the school board, employing for trillium grants, applying for a number of other grant opportunities. So through discussions we've had with them, I think we've come to a new arrangement, and I think it's better for all involved. The new arrangement of of to provide recreation and and activities on the island.
Thank you for that. And I do thank the staff that have worked very hard to do that because usually those meetings are in evenings. And and it has been a discussion that's been happening since before the pandemic. So it's nice to see it coming to an end. One other comment is, is we are saying we are naming a new committee, the Community Grant Committee. And community grants are on the agenda for committee of the whole. And I think there is a possibility that that name may change based on the discussion. So do we have the ability to modify that if we make different decisions in committee of the whole or surrounding those grants? Because we're not actually deciding on the grants tonight.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So the the committee has been renamed because there was a bit of confusion with the applicants on the eligibility of the grant funding. So I've had applicants call me and ask me if if they would be eligible or if it's only renewable energy projects that would be eligible for funding. So that's why staff are recommending the name change. If, for example, at committee of the whole, the name of the the policy does change, it doesn't necessarily have to affect the committee's name. But that that is up to council to to advise staff of. We are bringing forward the bylaw to establish the committees, approve the terms of reference and appoint the members to a meeting in April, once the recruitment drive is done. So if it is council's will to change the name of the the proposed grant committee to Renewable Energy Grant Committee, we can make that change for the April meeting for sure.
Anything else from the mover? Turn of the seconder. Deputy Mayor, any comments? Saying none? Other council members? Any council project?
Through your worship, just a couple of comments slash questions. When we're going into a new recreation master plan in the WJ Henderson Renewal Project, I just wondering, what's the rationale to removing the Recreation Committee? And I'll just refer to the report. I think it's on page six. I know it only met once since two thousand and nineteen, and and the problem has always been getting people out, getting members of the community. And I'm just wondering how that you know, in terms of community engagement, what's the rationale to eliminating it? Is it that there was no interest? And I'll go sort of another tangent here is we have to do a better job of recruiting, however that is, you know, more than just putting out an ad or a Facebook. It's human connection. It's so on. So that's just an observation. But I'd like to know the rationale, maybe just behind the recreation committee, given what's happening in the future. Thank you.
If I may answer that one, it's it's been a bit of discussion for a year now here in terms of the structure of the committee, and we've reported to council several times. I believe it's not specifically the the lack of recruitment, although that's one part of it. I think it's the mandate of the committee is no longer applicable to our needs in the municipality. It was a specific committee they were set up before in terms of recreation from the different areas to make sure that different from the different areas to make sure that different people had, you know, different areas got different recreational purposes. And as you stated, we are working on a recreation services master plan, which will, through that plan, be probably be more direction in terms of what that committee used to do. We did think through the strategic plan session that through one of the priorities of strong communities, there might be more of a need for a committee that talks about community well-being, which would have a broader scope than the recreation committee specifically. That could also include items such as physician recruitment. It could include items, you know, traffic calming and safety, and some of the other issues that are more applicable these days. So, I think the main crux of why the committee is being recommended to disband is it had lost its mandate in terms of effectiveness. Staff essentially are functioning to provide direction for recreation, and through the rec master plan and other public engagement initiatives, we can find out what the need are for recreation. But I don't believe council needs the committee to act as advisory any longer, and I think we didn't propose it tonight because we're waiting to see what comes out of the rec master plan. But we did speak during the strategic plan sessions about having some kind of community well-being committee, which I think could include initiatives as well as food security. So, it would be broader in mandate, and that can come later once we know the need for that kind of committee.
Just so I'm not seen as a bad guy, I do appreciate the fact there's going to be less committees. I think that makes the whole concept of getting community involvement a little easier. And I would encourage, however this rolls out, that some of these community members are invited, as opposed, you know, I think we have to reach out in another format besides what we have, and the human contact, whether it's on the fundraising committee or whatever, is going to be more valuable, and we all know that. Thank you.
And any other questions or comments?
Through your worship. This policy, as I understand it, too, allows for creating working groups for specific topics. So, do you see that as being, I'm thinking when the W.J. Henderson is close to opening, that we would ask user groups to form working groups for specific tasks rather than have a longstanding committee? Is that the idea here?
That's exactly the point with the new framework that we're asking council to adopt. The Bath Canada Day volunteers that work on that is considered a working group, so led by a staff member who can provide the resources of the township through a group of interested volunteers in the community to give sort of direct input in to events or programming or those kinds of things. That's exactly what those working groups would be used for.
Thank you. Are there any final questions or comments from council? Go back to the mover. Any final? None? Call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Extension of capacity allocation Lakeside Gardens Phase Three, Brookland Fine Homes, Amherstview. Staff, come forward. Is there any additional information at this time?
Through the mayor, no, there is none.
Up to council, then. We do have a report with a recommendation. Is there a council member that would wish to make a motion? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, through you, your worship. I would move that the report from the Development Services Division, March 12, 2024, reextension of capacity allocation Lakeside Gardens Phase Three, Brookland Fine Homes, Amherstview be received, and that the following be adopted. That the 36 units of capacity previously allocated within the Fairfield Water and Loyalist East Sewage Systems for the development of part of lots 35 and 36, concession one, and part of block D, Plan 1081, being parts three and four on reference plan 29R-11228, Amherstview, be extended one year until March 12, 2025, and that if the affected property receiving allocation has not obtained site plan approval by March 12, 2025, the allocation will be made available to other properties.
So moved. Do we have a seconder? Counsel Budrick. Any comments from the mover? Seconder? Any other? Seeing none, call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Comprehensive zoning bylaw review. Little change in staff? Any additional information at this time from staff? I think? So, just give me one second. I gotta, where are we? Zoning bylaw. Want to make sure I have the right one open. We have a report with a recommendation. Is there a council member that wishes to make a recommendation or motion? Counsel Ennis?
Thank you, through the mayor. Move that the report from the Development Services Division, March 12, 2024, re-comprehensive zoning bylaw review be received, and two, that council authorize staff to commence a review of the Loyalist Township zoning bylaw in accordance with Section 26.9 of the Planning Act.
So moved. Do we have a seconder? Counsel Parks. Any comments from the mover?
Through the mayor, just that obviously this is of fundamental importance to how Loyalist grows and how well we grow. So, this passes. I look forward to this being started.
Seconder? Any other comments from council? Seeing none. I do look forward to this being completed. It's very necessary, and with their new OP, it's quite timely. So, with that, call a question. All in favor? Motion, sorry, against? Abstain? Motion is passed. Proposed changes to the municipal class environmental assessment. Any additional information at this time from staff?
No, your worship.
Seeing none. Council, do we wish to put a motion on the floor? Counsel Budrick?
Recommendation at the report from Engineering and Environmental, Environment Division, March 12, 2024, re-proposed changes to municipal class environmental assessment to be received, and that council authorize staff to submit the proposed comments to the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation, and Parks on behalf of the township.
So moved. Do we have a seconder? Counsel Budrick? Any comments from the mover? Seconder? Anyone else? Seeing none, call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Motion requesting the province to amend blue box regulation for ineligible services. This was a motion that was requested to be put on. Do we have a mover this evening from council? Counsel Willis?
Wants to read this much.
I'm just glad.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I will put up the motion on the big screen, so Counsel Willis doesn't have to read it out.
Oh, okay. Almost like cheating a little bit, huh? On the screen. There we go. So moved. Do we have a seconder? Counsel Parks. Mover, any comments?
Nothing, your worship.
Seconder?
No.
Anyone else? Can't see the virtual. Better go. Just brought the virtual back online so that I could see if there was any one wish to speak. I will just quickly speak to this. I fully endorse this. I, I I guess the entities that were left out of being the area of responsibility is a little concerning. From a municipal point of view with funding, but also from the groups that were left out, these are not, most of them are not businesses that have unlimited cash flow, and would be expected to pay for their recycling instead of being able to have it picked up and without funding. So, I just, and of course, as a municipality, we always want to encourage recycling instead of putting it in the waste disposal. Our landfill is filling up, and once it's full, we will be in a bit of a jam to be able to figure out what to do with it after that. So, the longer we can maintain our existing site and prolong the closure, the better off the municipality is, and I would like to see this burden be placed back on the suppliers of the material and not on the users that typically are running on a shoestring budget to begin with. So, back to the mover for final comments. Okay. No comment? With that, I'll call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Next is motion regarding solutions to resolve significant financial and budgetary pressures related to infrastructure development, maintenance, and repairs. Clerk is bringing it up on the screen again. So, council, do we have a mover for this item? Counsel Budrick? So moved. Seconded by Counsel Parks. Mover, any comments? Seconder? Anyone else? Any comments? Seeing none, call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Now, we would entertain a motion that council now resolve into committee of the whole. Do we have a mover? Counsel Willis will move, seconded by Counsel Budrick, sorry. Call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed, and we will just take a short 10-minute recess to allow staff to reconfigure the electronics for the committee.
We're back live. And because the deputy mayor is participating virtually, he's unable to chair the committee of the whole session today. So I will call the meeting to order and then I will ask for nominations for chair. You can nominate yourself or you can nominate another person and then I would ask the committee to confirm the appointment of chair through a motion. With that, can I get a mo- is, are there any nominations for chair? Deputy Mayor?
I would nominate the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, do you accept?
I would like to leave it open to the floor for any other nominations first.
Counselor Willis?
I would nominate Counselor Prodrick.
Counselor Prodrick, do you accept?
Just because of the sheer glee in the mayor's face, yes, I will.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, can I get a motion to appoint Counselor Prodrick as the chair for the committee of the whole session of March 12th, 2024? A mover? Counselor Ennis, seconder, Counselor Willis? All in favor? That carries. Thank you.
To call the meeting to order at 7:13? Are there any declarations pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, we'll move on. Items for consideration committee to hold, 1331 Odessa Public School Traffic Concerns on North and Durham Streets. We have staff here and guests that may wish to talk to this item.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair, I'll give a brief summary of the report. And as well, you'll see I have Constable Scott Woodburn up here with me to chat towards the the traffic speed assessment that was completed as well. So just a quick introduction and then I'll hand it off to Scott. In December of 2023, we received staffing council received communication from a Odessa Public School Advisory Group. Some members of public that were here tonight to speak to council as well during the open forum session regarding concerns about some recent traffic accidents that had happened around the Odessa Public School area. So following that, we've worked with Constable Woodburn to complete a traffic speed assessment of the area to get a handle on what we think the concerns are. And we've then put together some short-term and long-term recommendations towards what we think will help improve the safety in the vicinity of the school. So I'll ask Constable Woodburn to speak towards that assessment and then I'll follow up afterwards with those recommendations. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. Mayor, thank you. Just a little background for you. I'm the traffic management officer for the Lennox and Addington OPP detachment. My responsibilities range all over the detachment area and are for anything related to the smooth, safe movement of traffic within the detachment area. I report to Staff Sergeant O'Byrne as my boss, so I'm very flexible in what I'm doing. Part of my role is to work with all of the roads departments within Lennox and Addington, as well as with the Ministry of Transport and the County Roads Department, looking at any issues that may be there or come forward. I also sit as a member of the Technical Advisory Committee for the County Roads Department in their regular meetings. I was asked to assist with the speed evaluation around the Odessa Public School. This included County Road Two in Odessa and on North Street in Odessa. Device was posted in both of those locations called a Black Cat. It is a device that's posted up onto a hydro pole. It is a black Pelican case, looks about the size of a small tablet, little thicker, angles up. It's designed so that it sits on the hydro pole, does not attract attention. There are no markings whatsoever on it. If you did in fact notice it driving by, you wouldn't know whether it belonged to Bell Hydro or the municipality for anything. The whole point of this device is it doesn't change the driver's habits. One of the other devices that's used by roads departments to get to vehicle counts and speed is a tube counter that we've all familiarized and seen her over the years. The tubes come across the road. The only problem with those devices is as you approach as a driver, you see something across the road. You immediately start to slow down until you figure out what it is. So it doesn't give a true reading of what the actual traffic measures may be out there. The Black Cat device being a stealth-type device doesn't change the driver's habits and allows us to collect that information and get a true picture of that. It doesn't do any feedback. It doesn't take any photographs. It simply records the date, the time and the speed of the vehicle. It also has some other abilities that records vehicle sizes, gap spacing and some other things. And that data is much more important to roads departments than it is to me in looking at the speeds in that particular area. It also gives us a very good, accurate count of the vehicles that do come through there. We then look at the 85th percentile. The 85th percentile comes from a traffic engineering perspective. Looking at, most drivers are going to drive the way they feel the road should be or their perception of the road. And that data is going to be reflected in about 85% of the drivers. There are still going to be 15% of the drivers that drive like absolute idiots, no matter what we do in the configurations and road safety engineering that is out there. So the 85th percentile is used from traffic engineering as a benchmark to give you an indication of where the speed of that particular road should be as opposed to what it may in fact be posted at. The data recorded on North Street and Graham Street would be very similar and the roads are almost equal in distance and in housing, traffic, et cetera. So only one of the roads was recorded. The 85th percentile for traffic combined in that area, speed is 30 kilometers per hour. Meaning 85% of the vehicles are driving at 30 kilometers per hour or less as they traverse Graham Street and North Street. We recorded a total of three vehicles in excess of the posted speed limit. This data was collected from the 5th of January to the 13th of January. So three vehicles in excess of the posted speed limit and nothing in excess of 60 kilometers per hour when it's a posted 50 kilometer per hour area. Speed is not an issue of concern on North Street or on Graham Street. On County Road Two, the Black Cat was posted just at the intersection of Graham Street and County Road Two and collected the speed data through that area over exactly the same timeframe. I have a Black Cat device and I also borrowed the Black Cat device that is owned by Loyalist Township so that we could get the speeds at exactly the same timeframe, so they are comparable for that timeframe. The 85th percentile combined in County Road Two at that location was 57 kilometers per hour. Again, the posted limit is a 50 kilometer per hour. That is well within an expected range within the municipalities for that area.
Thank you very much, Constable Woodburn, and through you, Mr. Chair. So after doing that speed assessment, staff went back and looked at what the concerns in the area were compared to what the speed data is telling us, which is that speed is not an issue in this area. But recognizing that safety is still the foremost priority, we wanted to make sure we were assessing everything that was being done in the area. So when we looked at the two accidents that occurred in 2023 in this vicinity, the first accident that happened March 28th, 2023, it involved three vehicles each traveling at slow speeds. The primary vehicle parked on the side of the road to drop off children, then pulled back into the live lane and struck a second vehicle, rebounding off it. Subsequently, there was an accidental acceleration collision with the third vehicle pushing into the porch of a nearby house. So in this instance, we have vehicles traveling at either low or stop speeds and a fair bit of congestion. So that's suggesting that, you know, there's not proper drop-off procedures in place and that there's not necessarily enough control within the right of way to help provide clear lines of sight and minimize congestion and make it easy for traffic to flow in and out of this area. So then the second accident that occurred last year was December 20th, 2023, and it involved one vehicle traveling at a slow rate of speed when a child slipped out from their parent's hand and ran into the roadway. Again, luckily in both these accidents, there was no fatalities, other, no, no major health concerns that came out of them. But obviously, they, they present a pattern of recurring incidents that need to be addressed. And so in both these instances, again, there was slow rates of speed, but there's a lot going on in this area. And so the approach that staff are recommending here is to take a look at this area and try and limit the amount of potential conflicts that are occurring as well as improving pedestrian safety. So the short-term recommendations that we're looking at is first implementing community safety zones. And so what a community safety zone is, is it's through the Highway Traffic Act and it allows municipality to post additional signage and reduce speeds and, and things of that nature. And it also allows for increased fines within the area for things like distracted driving or, or speeding is obviously an option there, but as we've mentioned, that's not a primary concern. But it would allow if someone was speeding in this area for additional fines over and above the typical to be handed out. And what the hope is here is that the additional signage and the communication and the additional fines will help, one, bring awareness to the concern that this is an ongoing issue in the area and two, help provide that extra deterrence so that way everyone is driving respectfully and, and obeying the rules of the road. The second item that we're recommending in the short term is implementing no parking zones around the school drop-off area. The intent here is to encourage and force traffic onto the schools drop-off area and not on just the side of the shoulder. So as we mentioned in the, the first incident on March 28th, it was when a driver had pulled off to the side of the road to let their children out of the vehicle and then tried to pull back into traffic. And so that's really what we're trying to prevent with these no parking zones is to sort of control where that drop-off and pickup is occurring in a safe and respectful manner. The third item that we're recommending in the short term is something that we've brought before council already and has received budget approval, but it's the improved pedestrian crossing of Main Street. So that will be the crossing of Main Street at the Durham and West intersection. And that improved pedestrian crossing will again bring awareness to the issue as well as help realign that, that crosswalk as right now it's at a diagonal, which is less than ideal. And so by fixing that with additional signs and lights and everything, we're hoping to improve safety through, through that area as well. The next two items are some assessments that we are hoping to do in the short term, which is conduct a road safety audit. So there is training that's available through Good Roads Ontario where they will provide staff training to complete this road safety audit. And what you're looking at here is the built infrastructure of the road. So what is it that can be done within the roadway, be it say curbs or signage or other initiatives that might help improve the safety of the roadway? So by having staff can complete that training, we can then go out and do an assessment and make recommendations for the long term of how to not just address this through these signage methods, but also just the built infrastructure and what needs to change to improve our rights and way. And then we also want to complete a traffic study. So this would be looking at, again, that built infrastructure piece in the long term by looking at, does it make sense to do a one-way on Durham and North to provide that consistency in traffic flows? So that way people know when and where to look and what to expect. And it, it just helps again, minimize those conflicts that we were talking about earlier. Or does it make sense to close Durham Street at Main Street and that way all the traffic is on North Street? And these are different initiatives that as staff, we think they have some merit, but we would want to get input from a third-party engineer that has more expertise on this and can really comment on the, the bigger picture. So by doing some of these, you know, what are the impacts that we're going to have on Main Street or Old Wilton? And, and you know, is it, is there going to be other concerns that by closing Durham Street that might be raised and not improve the situation at all? And so that's where we're looking to that third-party engineer to, to help guide in that assessment. And then in the long term, the recommendations would be to work with the school board to continue to develop their site plan and improve that pickup and drop-off procedure, pushing the, the traffic onto their site and providing the safe infrastructure within their site, including bus queuing and things like that. And then the other long-term recommendations would just be the implementations from those two assessment studies that I mentioned, so the road safety audit and the traffic study. Once those are completed, we can bring those recommendations back with further information for councils review. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you through the chair. Thank you to staff for bringing this, this report forward. Just a question on the, the item, the five items that are listed for the short term. The community safety zones, the no parking, pedestrian crossing, road safety audit and traffic study. Are you able to give us a sense of, of rough timing for those items?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair. So starting with the community safety zones, there is a consultation that we would like to go through when drafting that bylaw. And so that would take some time. We would hope to bring the final bylaw back to council this year for review. Um and so that would take uh some time. We would hope to bring the final bylaw back to council this year for review. Um ideally, we would have it in place for the fall uh school season as it starts. Um that would be obviously the target is that i- is an opportune time to to implement that. Um but we would want to make sure we're consulting with the school board, with the OPP and with all interested parties and making sure that uh we're not rushing through bylaw updates without having done our full due diligence and and making sure the plan we're presenting to council makes sense. Um for the no parking zones, uh I would say it would be on a a similar timeline for similar reasons to the community safety zone. Um the pedestrian crossing of Main Street, so that project will be tendered this year. Um and we will work with the contractor once that project is awarded to construct it this this construction season. Um I I again, ideally, it'll be in place for the the fall uh school start. Um but it there's a, there's a few things that we need to work through with the contractor because that is a a large project that also involves water main replacement and and other aspects of infrastructure, uh which may uh adjust the schedule um further out, but that will be uh constructed this year. Uh and then the the safety audits and the studies would be conducted this year and we would bring those back to council in the fall.
Counselor Willis?
Through the chair, um we have four months left of school and it would be nice if any of these things could happen a little bit more quickly because we're talking about the children. Um the no parking zones, if we implement that, would we then block where people park? Would we have concrete barriers or something? Because just putting up a sign, I never obey traffic signs. Um so would we do something so that we actually enforce that as well in a in some method? Because I could just see people going, yeah, I'm not parking, I'm just stopping.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair. So uh my recommendation would be one that uh does get implemented initially. Uh we would do some communications to make sure everyone's aware of the the new plan and also uh staff it with uh bylaw officers um to initially sort of roll that out and and make sure everyone's aware of what's going on. Uh and then, you know, assess it as we move forward with this plan. And if further measures are necessary after that, we could, we could look at what might be necessary. But I would typically uh start with communications and and enforcement through uh bylaw officers would be my recommendation.
Uh when the community safety zone is implemented, would that include one of those signs that tells me how fast I'm going?
Uh i- in this instance, uh I wouldn't recommend it again. And in this area, I don't think speed's a particular concern, just based on uh the assessment completed by the OPP. Um these signs would be, they say, community safety zone, there's uh and then they have the posted speed, which would be the the reduced limit. Um and we would make sure, again, we would follow up with public communications when that does get rolled out and and continue to work with the school board in terms of uh pickup and drop-off procedures there.
Anyone else? Counselor Parks?
Thank you, uh through you, through the chair. In just following up on Council Willis's comments and questions, um in regards to the uh parking, no parking zones, um that I'm assuming is going to be mostly on the streets and things like that. And it's, the intent is to control where that the drop-off and pickup is and to put it on to school property. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Sorry to continue. Um is the school property large enough to accommodate this flow of traffic?
Um so that's a good question. Uh so currently, there there are constraints. Um and it would potentially mean that uh there might be uh public members that would need to look at parking at, say, nearby parks and walking their their children to the the s- the school. Um but through our discussions with the school board, we are hopeful that they'll look at making infrastructure changes on their site to accommodate some additional uh part pickup and drop-off, which would remedy that problem. Um obviously, uh that's outside of our control, but we have had uh positive discussions with the school board that that is moving forward.
Thank you.
Your worship?
Thank you through you. Um and I'll direct it at staff, but it may be one that the OPP would be best suited. Um the speed assessment was done very quickly after the request went in and we appreciate that. The question always comes up when it's done in the winter, January. Um the eighty-five, eighty-fifth percentiles are actually very good in this study. Do we, would we normally find that it would be changed, say, this time of year when it's spring and no snowstorms, no snowbanks? Um would the public have the perception of being able to drive quicker or are we able to speculate on that?
The chair, uh your honor, the weather during our studies was actually quite remarkable as our winter has gone. And it was just the Saturday when I was taking them down that we had a snowstorm. The rest of the timeframe, the roads were clear, bare and dry. No snow on the ground.
Anyone else?
Um I have a few questions. And I will start this with the statement that as a former school principal, there's nothing worse. I've had this happen, have somebody come in and say so-and-so was hit by a car in front of the school. There's nothing worse. Um I guess um I understand the OPP presentation, the eighty-eighty-fifth percentile and whether you change the speed limit or not, that fifteen percent, it it won't matter to them, correct? Okay. Um I'm looking at a policy asked by council in nineteen ninety-nine with four uh or things that were in your report, and I'm just wondering, because it is policy, um what do we need to have to implement that? Do we have to go through a formal study of, you know, bring in consultants, et cetera, or is this policy not good enough, at least temporarily? As Counselor Willis said, it's a long time to June thirtieth or whatever day the school ends now. And um that would be my concern is what can we do right now? Um is it the community safety zone? Uh I understand from what I read, we need a uh probably a uh a uh recommendation, a motion from council. Um I guess, can you maybe uh interpret for me that policy? What we need to implement a policy that's already on the books?
Um yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair. So the policy, as you mentioned, is from nineteen ninety-nine uh and it is uh I'll I'll say quite sort of limited in in what it can do. Obviously, it provides the the purview to to go forward and and implement these community safety zones, uh which require bylaws to to pass and effectively regulate everything. Um the the lead time in uh com- implementing the community safety zones wouldn't necessarily be creating the new policy that we would look at during this review. It would be that consultation piece with the the OPP and with uh the school board and and so on. That that will take a bit more time to develop. Um obviously, as staff, we are invested as well in getting this done as as quickly as possible. So if it is possible for us to get it done within this school year, uh we will certainly try that. I just wouldn't want to um commit to that and then not be able to deliver, which is why we have said that we would aim for the fall season because uh these things take time and we'll have to come up with the plan and put together everything in place. Uh and and I I appreciate the the urgency of the situation and we will continue to work towards that.
Okay, if I can follow it up with another way to go at it. We have Bath Canada Day, we have numerous events where parking is limited. Um streets, signs go up or uh pylons go on the street and there's no parking in certain areas. Why can't, can we do that here?
Um so we can certainly put up signs, I guess the issue becomes uh the enforcement piece. So without passing the bylaws, um they are just signs that have no standing uh within the Highway Traffic Act, which would be my my concern. Um which is why we have recommended going through that procedure to uh create the bylaws, do the consultation as necessary and and follow all due diligence to to implement the the proper measures.
Okay, in November twenty twenty-one, there was a calming survey done, or at least it was open on the website, and I couldn't find any of the information on our website. Do you have any background on that? And if it um um if it, if there was responses maybe from school communities in general, because this isn't just a, an issue at Odessa Public, it's Mount Carmel, it's Amersville Public, it's Fairfield, it's Bath. Um do you have anything on that, sort of that surveyor? Or if not, could you get it to me?
Uh yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. So we can per- certainly provide those results and and that has informed a lot of what we're doing through the infrastructure master plan as well. And uh as you mentioned, that this isn't just an issue isolated to the Odessa Public School. It is, this review will also, for those community safety zones and no parking zones, look at the other schools within uh the township borders, specifically the ones that are on the township-controlled right-of-ways, um which is again why it will take a bit more time, because it's not just dealing with one school board. There's, there's multiple that we're dealing with and it's not just dealing with uh the community of Odessa. We have to look at uh Amersview as well.
And just sort of to summarize, it looks like um probably um your department's view of short term is a little different than the two ladies sitting at the back or some people at the front. Is that fair to say? I'm getting too nuts, so.
Uh it it sounds like it.
Okay, I I'm sorry, I withdraw that, but I do think there is a uh a uh concern that it moves as quickly as possible.
Uh understood and staff share that concern.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other question?
Through the chair, um to staff. So what you're saying is that we do have a bylaw for creating a community safety zone. It's an old bylaw from nineteen ninety-nine that needs to be updated. Could we implement a community safety zone next week according to that bylaw and then refine moving forward?
Uh so through you, Mr. Chair. So we don't have a bylaw currently. We have a policy which provides the guidance for implementing the bylaws.
Okay, thank you.
Part of the issue is that policy actually references a committee which no longer exists. Um so again, it's from nineteen ninety-nine and and it just needs an overhaul. Um but I I will stress, it's not sort of the policy piece that we think is going to take the time. We think we can develop the policy and the bylaw in tandem a- and that won't delay us at all. So we'll bring both of those back to council a- as soon as possible.
In your discussions with the school and the school board, do you know if they have implemented any new procedures or done any education and training with parents uh to address some of the issues as well?
Uh through you, Mr. Chair, uh not that I'm aware of, but my discussions have been focused mostly on, I'll say, infrastructure upgrades.
Um we have a recommendation on the floor. Is there anybody that wants to make a motion? Counselor Ennis?
Thank you through the chair. Um move that uh that the report from the Engineering and Environment Division, March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, read Odessa Public School traffic concerns on North and Durham Streets be received. Two, the council direct staff to bring forward an updated policy and bylaw for community safety zones. Three, the council direct staff to bring forward an updated parking bylaw. And four, the council direct staff to report back on the results of the road's safety audit and traffic study once completed.
Seconded by Counselor Boudrick, any further discussion? Counselor Ennis?
Just to, I I I again, thank um staff for bringing forward this report. Uh thank the um Odessa Public School uh parent advisory, uh council chairs for uh raising, raising the issue. Um I I think the community and uh and council im- impressed upon uh staff, the the um urgency of doing this in in an appropriate fashion, but in as, in as timely manner as as possible, um if if these recommendations are accepted. Um I think it's an example of the community raising concerns and Loyalist Township being uh very responsive to those uh concerns in uh reviewing the problem, assessing the problem and coming up with uh reasonable solutions to to help address it. Um and again, thanks to all involved for bringing forward this report.
Anyone else? Um I would just like to apologize to Luke. Uh I think my comments were un- uh unacquainted. I'll I'll withdraw them and it wasn't fair to you and your staff. I know that you work very hard on such things and I know that um at times we all get frustrated with how things work and I can appreciate the community bringing things forward. And uh I hope we can move fairly quickly on this as humanly possible. Call the question. All in favor? Motion is carried. Um next item is thirteen, three, two, framework for community grant policy. Have any other information to provide?
Yep, um through you, Mr. Chair. I would like to provide a brief overview of um how this uh report came to be and uh where we are at right now. So um the township entered into the community benefit agreement with Wind Electric in two thousand fifteen and the community vibrancy fund agreement with Kingston Solar in two thousand fourteen. Each funding agreement provides stipulation on base contribution each year, how the funding must be allocated and the maintenance of the designated reserve fund. Currently, the annual contributions from both agreements yields approximately six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars per year in funding. A policy was also created to establish principles, standards, guidelines a- and guidelines for the maintenance and accounting of the funding. Council established a renewable energy vibrancy review committee and two subcommittees to review the and evaluate applications and make make recommendations to council. The renewable energy fund grant program has been active since two thousand twenty-two. Applications to this program have been steadily increasing over the time with the February two thousand twenty-four intake including the most applications yet. Furthermore, the township also has a council ad hoc grant donation request policy, which was approved in two thousand sixteen to provide some guidance in um addressing small one-off requests for the support that come in from time to time from different needs from a variety of individuals and organizations. The cap for these types of requests is two hundred dollars for individuals and five hundred dollars for organizations. Since implementation of the renewable energy grant policy, however, there has been minimal uptake in the requests under the council ad hoc grant slash donation request policy. Staff have also been directing applicants uh to apply through the renewable energy fund grant policy instead of the ad hoc grant policy. Finally, there's also the mayor and um the C O, um they both have a discretionary fund, which is used to um for in-kind services and financial assistance for organizations and um individuals. So staff reviewed the renewable energy grant fund program, the ad hoc grant donation request policy and the discretionary funds and the community benefit agreements and the community vibrancy fund agreements, the policies, the community structure holistically. Um we reviewed um all these pieces to ensure that all grant opportunities align with council's strategic priorities, uh to ensure consistency and fairness, to ensure that the program is consistent with the current practice and also to reduce the application burden for um for applicants. Um with this review, staff developed the community grant framework that's in front of you right now. The framework was developed to implement and establish criteria and guidelines for providing various grants or in-kind support to organizations and individuals. So some of the um proposed considerations in the framework um include that there's four community grant types. So there's capital, there's program event, uh there's a the free use of facilities and then there's the discretionary funds. Each have their own maximum available funding. So for example, the free use of facilities would be um would be approved by the director of community services, community and customer services, and it has uh a maximum of ten thousand dollars per year. Uh the name of the grant type is also proposed to be changed to avoid any confusion and to avoid the assumption that only renewable energy projects are that only renewable energy projects are eligible for funding. Uh, the uh another consideration is that um only one application would be permitted per applicant per year. Um, another consideration is um the amendments to the dollar value of approvals for the variety of grant types and how funding will flow. Um, there's also different reporting requirements. In terms of gen- um eligibility, the general eligibility would be that nonprofit charitable volunteer organizations um that provide services to the township residents would be eligible. Um, organizations with a political mandate um that are for for profit and those that are um uh under uh from which the township purchases services would not be eligible. Um, all four community grant types would have separate application forms and intake deadlines. This will um will this will help differentiate between um between the 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 grant types and minimize the burden for for the smaller asks. The grant types also differ in terms of reporting. Sorry, I already said that. No. Um, reporting requirements, review process and um approval authority. So for example, like I said, the um Director of Community and Customer Service would approve the free use of facilities um uh request and um the uh grant committee would approve the capital and the program event grant. And then, of course, um the C O and the mayor would approve the discretionary fund respectively. And the framework also stays true to the original community benefit agreements which were signed in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen. Um, it also removes the ward-based limitations for organizations um that provide a benefit to the entire community. So um in saying that, so at this meeting, staff are asking for comments from you as the committee of the whole. The feedback that you provide today would be considered by staff when developing um uh the proposed community grant policy, which we are bringing forward, um, which we anticipate to bring forward uh at the eight, March twenty-sixth meeting of council. Uh, and through you, Mr. Chair, the the Director of Corporate Services Strategy and Innovation and Rebecca and I are happy to answer any questions of the committee.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Willis?
Through the chair and uh to staff, thank you for your work on this. This uh policy has been in place for a few years. We are so privileged in this township to have a fund like this that can support community activities and particularly with the strategic plan focusing on building community. I think we're very lucky to have this. Um, and I think it's terrific that we have this opportunity now that we've seen the policy in place to refine it and improve it. I mentioned earlier in the agenda about the name and I just wanna um for council and for discussion, just to just talk about where I was coming from there. And I understand what the clerk is saying about the the name Renewable Energy Benefit Grant Program being confusing and and making people think that it's only for new renewable projects. Um, a couple of things on that. So the only funder to these grants right now are the Renewable Energy Benefit Funds and and that's why they exist. Um, and the proponents offer these funds. They expect to have some sort of recognition and there is there is language in the policy and I think we can improve that on how that recognition is done. Um, but if it were not in the title of the grant, I would want something in the information that's provided to the community so they understand why we have this money when they drive by solar projects and wind projects and gosh knows what projects we would have in the future that they understand that even though these projects aren't necessarily something we all want to have, they have brought a benefit to the community. Um, I also think it's important that, you know, as I said, that residents know why we have the privilege of these funds. I think also that the companies who provide these funds are writing big checks and I I do have a concern that we're being disrespectful in some way in sanitizing the name of the fund and and not recognizing that that's where the money came from. And the third point I have about this is that the I E S O is about to issue their next round of of proposals or requests for proposal. And we are surely going to have proponents in front of us who are talking about expanding wind projects throughout the township, expanding solar projects throughout the township. And I do think it's really important that we let those proponents know that we expect to negotiate equally beneficial funds for the township for any future projects that may come to us. So that's my thought with it. I'm not married to it, but I did just want to explain kind of where I was coming on that point.
Thank you. Any other comments? Uh, if I may, um, just a few things. Um, I think um the one thing I would I I struggle with is the twenty-five seventy-five percent split that has been traditionally there. Um, I do think we have to recognize that the um residents of Amherst Island still live with that with all the wind projects and they've gone through the process. And I think in the per- yeah, I believe in the original agreement, solar and uh the wind elective uh were uh, that was in that thing. And I know the previous council changed one of them. But I do think that uh it's important to recognize the twenty-five percent, whether it's a minimum or a maximum in the sense that it does not only benefited the township for the whole, but Amherst Island took a lot of the, and I'm going to use the word brunt of the uh the issue. Um, I do think we need to recognize that. Um, the other thing on on point three, um, and I'm talking capital grants here. If we're going to go up to seventy-five thousand and I do understand the need to um maybe keep a an eye on what's going on with the money. Uh, an example might be a group, a nonprofit organization in the community that provides a s- service. Um, let's say they need a new roof. They're not going to be able to complete an entire project by doing it halfway and then paying for the rest of it on their own. I think maybe in that case, um, i- i- if a group uh has a successful um project, maybe at the halfway point, they submit their bills or or, you know, show where the progress is and that we're ready for our second installment. Now, that can be the whole cash thing or it could be um A as as they get uh bills, et cetera, et cetera. Problem with that is that then it adds a burden to the township to say, okay, well, we got a bill for this now. We can, you know, so that's just a thought there. Um. So that that would be one thing. And again, I guess uh I will say the township staff have done a really good job um in communicating and that's improved quite a bit, I think, in the last year. But I just wonder did this one slip through in terms of the community and was that should it have been part of the community engagement process? I'm just throwing that out there. Um, and just going back to the previous uh uh policy that was developed, uh wondering if that had been a um gone through a similar process because I know that uh there is a lot of confusion as to, you know, what does this mean? What does that mean? I have no problem with one um envelope is no better term, but I do agree with Counselor Willis that we haven't even put a shovel in the ground at the arena and the signs already up. You know, funding provided by, but I think those are things that maybe in this case that um depending on the size of the activity, um, we need to acknowledge the source of the funding. And uh, you know, it could be simple in some in some things as if you're doing a maybe you're supporting a awareness day in some kind of situation. Maybe there's just even a line in the program funding supported by. But I do agree, it's time to put it all together in one and um those are my few comments. Counselor Parks?
Thank you through the chair. Uh, just a few comments and um we went through this at the last council and it took a long time to get to an agreement. Um, it was a bit of a arduous process and I am pleased to see that it's coming back to council for for the review or committee of the whole and then to council for for the review. Um, the process for the applications has been um challenging for a lot of the organizations that were were applying for funding. I do believe what Counselor Willis is saying that there needs to be some acknowledgement to where the funding stream comes from with this. Um, whether it's part of like the name of the the committee or whether it's something that's acknowledged on the application or when the calls go out. Um, I think there needs to be that acknowledgement and like Counselor uh Prudock has mentioned, maybe when there is a certain funding limit that's provided that it be acknowledged on a sign um or plaque or something um for whatever that is. Um, back to the twenty-five seventy-five percent. Um, when I saw that it was, you know, again, being suggested that that be taken out, I did have, I do share the concerns that Amherst Island has been the ones that have bearing the brunt of of the windmills. Um, so I do like the idea that there is, whether it's a minimum or a maximum amount, be put in there strictly for Amherst Island. I think that's important to have that on there. Uh, because I would like to make sure that they have access to those funds and um, what's my other point? Oh, opening up the solar project money to the whole township, not just to the geographic area, I think is important too because that that it was committed for five years and then had to be changed. I think it's time to change it and make it part of the township funding.
C O?
If I just may respond to some comments we have so far uh on that to acknowledge council's comments and I I think staff agree for sure. Uh, I think the the percentage twenty-five seventy-five percent is so is the framework is currently written. That is the maximum of twenty-five percent for the island has been removed and it's staff's intention that if in a given year a large enough project comes forward, Amherst Island could potentially get all of it. Um, is how it goes. Whether council wants to put a minimum, in which case if if there's not a project that comes forward, then that minimum amount would then be put into a reserve or accounted for as for use on the island only. Uh, similar to the solar money for the first five years is in a is accounted for so that it's only for use uh in that area for the that that portion of the money, we could certainly do that. But the way the staff agreed that uh, you know, the island um deserves to have that that maximum perhaps should change. And uh, so that's been removed such that in any given year, uh, an applicant from the island could potentially get all of the money. Um, that the those restrictions aren't put there. The first five years of the solar farm money have been accounted such that we know how much that would have been to for those areas. And then there will be a drawdown as projects come forward for those areas on that money. But that now the funding from the solar agreement is uh open to the whole municipality. Council also wanted to know about recognition and I agree and I like the idea of signs or or applications or or any of those kinds of things that we can say that this is this is where the money is coming from. Uh, I think that's a great idea and and staff didn't want to detract from the proponents who have given us this money and and I agree, we should should recognize them. It's just a bit in the marketing. Um, I think there has been substantial um confusion over the last several years of of what the money could be used for. And I think we are seeing now uh through efforts from staff. So we essentially have a list of all community groups and they got specific notice and invitation to apply uh including our social media. So staff are doing a better job sort of getting the word out and I think this program is still relatively new and in its infancy. And I think as word gets out, that goes forward. I also heard some comments with regard to uh in the past, when this was presented to council, that it was difficult for members of the public to apply. The reporting requirements were onerous. Uh, we, you know, we had some of those pieces and staff through the framework wants to make it easier so that if you're applying for less than five thousand dollars, it's a one pager. You don't have to provide audited financial statements, those kinds of things. We want some checks and balances in place, but we want to make it easier for those um people as well. Um, so we for sure are are cleaning up the application process and the uh the reporting process and then there will be a continuum. So if you want, you know, you're doing a a bizarre and you want a donation of ferry tickets or something like that, then it's easy to get that um worker way up. We do want to make sure that council is aware and that's why it was sort of put out in a framework here, hopefully easy to read, that if you're okay with the limits. So right now there are some limits in terms of what you're able to ask for for program funding and and there's a limit on the capital funding as well. Uh, we certainly want to hear from council if you think those amounts are still applicable. I think they were set several years ago and I think there's been acknowledgement that the costs of doing events and and doing a lot of the work has really gone up and whether or not that should go up. We have also allowed for three intakes versus two intakes per year. Um, we don't necessarily want first to the post, uh, first to the pot to get all the money for a year and whether or not we divvy the 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 amount up over those three um, those three intakes such that if, you know, you can't come and just get all of it, but that the second intake, if it's not taken up in the first one, there'll be more money for the second one, that kind of thing. We want to try to be fair there, but really want council to say um, do you want that limit to go up currently for program and events? I believe it's five thousand dollars. Um, which is really an operational cost for a lot of things. And I think we've seen uh from number of organizations that that maybe should go up a bit for for programming. Um, with respect to getting it all at once, we're proposing to that they can get the money once they sign the agreement, the necessary application, they get half of it and then they get the other half once the event's done with with whatever reporting they're supposed to give. Uh, I think this really the work that staff put in to try to uh just refine this policy, I'm hoping is making it clearer, making it more uh acceptable to people, more accessible uh as well uh to residents. And I think the intent of having any monies that uh do not get allocated in a given year go back into the fund. Our intent is to make this hopefully something in perpetuity and the way the policy will be written is that after the the agreements are finished, we may have new agreements as Counselor Willis had put in it. Um, or or the uh grants will become out of the interest that's available for this reserve money. So I'm, we're hoping that this will be a benefit in perpetuity for the municipality if we can do it that way. Uh, and so that would be the only caution about extending the limits to any one organization. Um, there's still council discretion in the policy so that that staff will be able to still bring uh large projects forward from a municipal point of view, but also if we got an application for someone way beyond the limits, then it's possible that council could also do an exception in that case. Ideally, we don't have to come back for exceptions all the time. We write a policy that kind of applies and is fair and is what council wishes to see for this this wonderful pot of money to be able to benefit our communities. I believe that answers the questions that were brought up today.
Counselor Ennis?
Thank you. Through the chair. Um, just with just a comment with respect to the removing the geographical limitations, which I don't necessarily have a a a an issue with um having all the funds go into one pot and and there's no maximum. Um, you, you know, and yet, um, I don't think over the years, we would want to see one community, whichever one it is, you know, get ninety percent of the funding, for example, right? Um, so if there are sort of no prescriptive guidelines there may, you know, we either may want some policy guide rails or um at least uh to monitor and report annually, um, sort of by geographic area so that we can, you know, just keep an eye on it um to ensure some, you know, reasonable level of uh across community investment. Um, and I, you know, that can be done through sort of monitoring or reporting um and maybe some some you know, sort of policy guidelines in the ultimate policy. Um, I'll uh as well. I think um it's, I I think uh sort of loyalist and staff need to take more of a a role in bringing forward um projects for approval. Um, especially on the capital side. Uh, I think it's difficult. There's only so many community organizations that may have that owner have access to land to do a a capital project. And in fact, I think we're probably unusual i- in this way, like the one the other ones in other municipalities I've looked at, you know, it's it's the it's the municipality that, you know, works with the community, you know, consulting with the various communities to to sort of scope. you know, consulting with the various communities to, to sort of scope a number of potential projects in each area that may then be brought forward to, to the fund for approval. So I think there's perhaps a bigger role for the municipality and staff to play, to play there. And so that we can, you know, spend these funds, you know, in an appropriate way so the community can get benefit and in a timely manner as well. Like, you know, they have been in place for, you know, a number of years. So I think that role of the township and staff can help it in a timely manner and help do it in an appropriate way across all communities.
Councillor Budrick?
I would, I would like to see some guardrails to ensure that Amherst Island gets their fair share on the simple fact that as our community grows and changes, this fund will be around for a couple of decades, if not longer. This council will change, the demographics of our municipality will change. And like the, the two councillors on the other side of the table said that, you know, they've, they've wore the brunt of, of this project. I would just like to see, to make sure that something was definitely there for them to be taken care of.
Your worship?
Thank you. I basically, I have agreed basically with that in principle with everything that's been said. There's also been a few suggestions and so I'm just going to offer some numbers to go with them for discussion. It was mentioned by staff that maybe the grant, the allotments are maybe a little bit low. So I'm going to put it on the table that I think the program and event grant current limit is 5,000. I agree that inflation has made that not as, the value is not there anymore. I'm going to make a suggestion that we double that to 10,000. I'm going to also make the suggestion that based, from what I'm gathering, probably matching, matching the wording of the solar agreement, the allotment for Amherst Island with the turbine, so the first, the equivalent of the first five years of in production would be set aside for the most impacted community, which in this case would be the island. And I have always believed that that was a prudent way to be able to do it. And I'm just going to make a very brief statement that I, I know for a fact that the people that live the closest to one of these installations are the ones that pay the biggest price for it, considering I have an installation on two of my property lines. So I honestly believe that the ones closest to it should be made, made sure that there is an allotment for them. And the flip side is there is going to be a decommissioning, so the pain is not done yet. It will happen again. And just a suggestion as well, I like the idea of the, the contributors and I think it can be put in the policy where the current major contributors can be acknowledged. I don't think that's an issue. It was mentioned about the three allotments per year or three intakes. Sorry, I'm struggling with that word. I would suggest, as was mentioned, you don't want the first out of the post to be getting it all. So I would just throw it out there for discussion as well that maybe we do something like, make sure that a third is, is available for each allotment. It's not in the framework, but it's something that could be included. And that way we know that the, the people coming in at the end of the year, planning for a winter event or a spring event, the funds are still available for them as if they would have been at the first intake. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I suppose I would just echo a lot of the comments that have been made. You know, councillor Budrick, councillor Parks, the mayor and myself were on the last council and to councillor Parks's point, you know, it was, it was, it was, it was a difficult, we, we were elected at the, at the tail end of turbines and were charged with the task of developing this policy and it was, it was difficult. And I'm really, I'm, I'm really glad to see, at least as I perceive the discussions so far, that there is a consensus around, you know, holding the line for a minimum amount for the island because to councillor Budrick's point, you know, there will be other councillors and other councils further down the road. I think we do need to enshrine, enshrine that minimum. I appreciate councillor Ennis's point about ensuring that, that the funds flow to the rest of the township as well and, and agree that there will be measures for us to, to, to ensure that. I mean, again, everything comes to council for approval, approval ultimately. And, and to piggyback again on, on a point that councillor Budrick made, you know, for, it, it's not even so much, sometimes these discussions have been framed as a way of, you know, that, that this money is sort of, you know, reparations money for what the island went through. And that is, that is certainly one way to look at it. But another way to look at it is, you know, Ward One is, is a small ward in our municipality and it's not growing at the same rate as other wards. And so when we look at the likelihood of, you know, capital investment on the island, you know, this, this was seen by those proponents who, who wanted the turbines to come. This was seen as a means of, of, of getting the island some injection of, of investment that it otherwise might not see on things like the general rate. And I think that principle is still a good one. And so again, I, I would like to just echo what I, I'm feeling is a consensus to at least ensure that that 25% minimum is in there. It took the last council, you know, a while to make sure that that was, that that was there. And I'd like to see it stay there to ensure that, you know, whatever future councils look like, that, that that's there, there for the island going forward.
Thank you. Councillor Willis?
Through the chair, I appreciate everyone's comments about that. And I don't think it's just, you know, I, I do agree that 25% minimum should go to Ward One just to be consistent with the solar and whether it's the first five years or 25% semantics. I would also want to see something in the policy that speaks to future projects and future affected neighborhoods because the next one could be Odessa. We don't know where it is, but, but I would not want those communities to have to struggle to get that recognition. So I would like to see something like that in the policy. I have always been quite open about struggling with the part of the policy that allows staff to put in submissions for grants. And building on what councillor Ennis said, I do like the idea that, that staff would get involved with working with communities and partners to develop new opportunities. But simply moving general rate type expenses to the grant program, I don't think is the right way to go. And you've already seen in the last 18 months that I have to vote no to everything that tries to do that. So I would really like to see that change. Distribution of the funding, so getting kind of into the nitty gritty, if you will, and please stop me if, if someone else wants to speak. I also have a concern about with the capital grant saying that we'll give 50% of the funding upfront and 50% at the completion of the project. The difference between us as a township getting a government grant and a small not-for-profit getting it is we have the ability to finance, we have the ability to access cash and they don't. I understand the risk management that staff are trying to achieve with this. And perhaps it could be something that, once those, once those groups get an invoice from a vendor because for their capital project, that they bring it to us and then we release those funds so that they can be paying their vendors on time. Because we also don't want vendors to stray away from these projects because they're waiting to get paid. There was, I agree with the communication and the consultation. I, I don't recall that there was robust public communication or consultation when the initial policy was done. And I believe part of that was council was under pressure to come up with a policy and a process because the money was just sitting there and people were anxious to start applying for it. But I would like to see at minimum, you know, using our community engagement framework, that we allow the community to speak via survey or something like that in case there's something that we're missing. You know, many of the groups that have filled out the applications and applied for and gotten the grants could provide us some, some useful feedback there. I'm also, I'm pleased that the number of applications that have come in in this intake have increased and I'm looking forward to seeing them. But I have been puzzled over the years that we've seen very little from the schools. We've seen very little from minor sports. So somehow we're, we're missing it. And it could just be that a high school principal doesn't have time to fill out a grant application and maybe we need to be working with the parents councils and such. The policy as it reads now says that any unused funds at the end of the year go to the reserve. And then the reserve says that that reserve is set up to be accessed after the agreements expire. And those agreements could be extended if the projects extend. And I would like to see that the unused funds remain available because I think there are some good projects out in the community where we want that pot to be able to grow so that, you know, if there is a major capital project that benefits the community, that the money is there. So, and, and I could just be getting hung up on that, you know, maybe it's two reserves, not one, but, but just concerned about that. The capital grant, so currently there is no cap on the upper limit of a capital grant. And I know that in the original policy that was developed by the committee, there was a, a cap and then there was not a cap in the current policy. And I know even, you know, there have been times where we thought there was a cap and there, there isn't. I don't necessarily disagree that there shouldn't be some sort of a cap. I think that 75,000 is very low. You can't renovate your kitchen for 75,000 dollars these days. So, so I would welcome some discussion amongst council on that because, and also to allow for the exceptions when there is something that, that a community agrees and it's, it's a major bricks and mortar project. I agree with changing the program and event grant to 10,000 dollars. And I question for staff is, is 2,500 dollars for in-kind services enough? And I don't really have an idea of what the in-kind services are that people ask for and what the cost is for them. But, you know, I, I wouldn't, I would like to just understand that. And I'd also like some sort of an inflation mechanism, even if it's a report brought back to council every year, that allows us to reconsider what those amounts are based on what's happening with inflation. I believe it's new that you've included volunteer organizations as groups that could apply for grants, which would suggest that they're not a, a registered not-for-profit or charity. But then the, the, the capital and program grants are asking for things like bylaws and things like that. So I think we'd need to, you know, understand what those volunteer organizations could look like and how we would vet them. And to the CAO, please, through the chair.
Yep. If I can address that right now, I believe we didn't want it to be just incorporated organizations. You can imagine that there's a group of artists who want to do a studio art tour and likely that's not an incorporated organization. We have the gentleman who's gotten money for the music in the park at Finkelshor's Park as well, so it's an individual. I think we want, there's, I guess, more risk to mitigate if it's individuals putting events on and we want to make sure the events are actually happening and, and get some idea about financials that we're not paying people salaries. We want to promote those things. So it's, it is a balance and I think the voluntary organization was supposed to be just that. In my head, it's a, it's a group of artists who put on a studio art tour or, yeah, that, that do not have an incorporated association. We do also want to see that they're able to access these funds, so for sure.
The other one, and I, I believe I know the answer, but I just want to ask it. In the current policy, it does ask for three quotes for any of the capital projects, but it also notes that sometimes that's not possible because there's only one vendor for a hydro balloon or whatever. So I'm assuming that that would stay in the policy, that if there's not three vendors, then you're not required to get three quotes. Is that correct?
Certainly some of this is, is staff and our treasurer is very particular about making sure that there's some accounting and some paperwork behind handing out some of this money. And if council is upping some of the upper limits, we, we certainly want to be able to make sure we still get that back from, from residents, from the, the grantees who get the money, that they're proving that they've used it for the purpose that they've applied for.
My only final comment is I commend staff on the work they've done with this and the consultation they've done with people. And I think it would move a long way to improve the program and then also move us towards the strategic goal of building community.
Thank you councillor. Any other? Councillor Budrick?
Just one thing for councillor Willis to consider, when she put in the wording, a minimum for Ward One, if we could change that maybe to a minimum for Amherst Island? Just because we've got a ward review coming, a different part of the township might be called Ward One. That's all, it's, it's written right properly over the gate, that's all.
Because then everybody will want to be Ward One.
Thank you. If I could just, I appreciate what the mayor said with the programs because it's hard to get a program organized for less, for $5,000 this year. And I'll give you an example. It was a program put on at ESS this week on diversity and I would love to have gone to it, but it wasn't communicated. And to get to your question about schools, I've gone into Ernest Town and talked with people and I think, you know, it's, it's an ongoing process because I can appreciate the busyness of a school and hopefully we can continue to grow that. But just one question, clerk, you mentioned 645,000 dollars per year is what we get. In, and again, this may be an unfair question given the newness to the situation, but maybe somebody in finance, but they're new too. Has the intake ever been totally allotted in a year? And if not, like are we talking half of it? Like, we have any sort of data on that?
Through you, mister, mister chair. I do have the data, it's just not in front of me right now. But to, to my recollection, the entire amount has not, never been allocated for any intake or a year.
Thank you. Councillor Parks?
Just to speak to that point myself, there's a lot of people that don't know about this, a lot of residents. And I think as it gains more traction, we probably will start to cap out and on some of those mounds. But, yeah.
And I did have a second part to that. I, I can appreciate staff work and I love the chart because I think the fact you've got capital program free use all laid out. Any fool, including myself, would go, yes, I can do that or we need to do this. And I think that explains it very well, at least in my humble opinion.
The one final thing that I, in response to councillor Willis asking about in-kind services and the 2,500 dollars. So it's not free use of space, so that would perhaps be barricades or garbage cans or that kind of thing. That would be, you know, there might be a charge for that. The reason the cap is on there and I think, you know, we can speak with staff before we bring the policy back is ideally all, we're not, we don't have excess staff time necessarily. And if you up that dollar amount, that means that we're committing quite a bit of staff time to a community event. And while we do have a nice big pot of money, we do not have a nice big pot of extra staff resources. And that, that's partially also why there's a cap, but we will speak about the type of things and whether it's a menu of things you can ask for, what we would agree to do. It, it is probably easier that if they needed, I can't imagine. If they needed something, it's probably easier if they get it from a vendor than getting it from municipal resources, which are planned out quite to the detail.
Thank you. One more? You said last, last time.
I hadn't actually thought about spending all the money in one year, but would council have the last?
have the latitude if all of the program event grant money was exhausted, but there was still some money sitting in the capital grant to make the decision to move some of that money to the other grant to be able, if they wanted to grant all of the applicants?
I think that's a great idea, certainly allowing that discretion. And as you spoke about, is about the monies that go back into reserve every year that aren't spent. I think if, if there's monies in there and there's recommendation, I think for sure the reporting to the committee so that you know where the money is and then the committee can look at that. And if it's, we want to take some of the capital money this time, you know, because we're going to put it in, in program. Or if there's monies that have been used in a prior year, but you now have a project that's, that's going to be putting you over, that certainly will ensure that flexibility in the policy for council.
One more. The, the recommendation is that this comes back to council at the next council meeting. But I do believe that there is some, some room for some community engagement. If a motion were made that we ask that a survey be done, so not town halls necessarily, but the reason I'm asking for it is there are a lot of people that I think will have some opinions on this and, and having an engagement process further promotes the fact that the grants are available. But I think people will be more open to us in a survey than coming and speaking before council, that they'll be nervous and may not want to do that. So if, if the motion was to do some work and bring it back at the April 23rd council meeting, would we need to delay the June intake or could we still do the June intake on time?
If I may, through the chair. There's a number of ways of doing this. We could bring back a draft policy based on this comment for council and then send, and then send it out for public comment. If you'd rather, because I think it may be easier to read and communicate with the public, is we clean up the framework based on the conversation tonight and we circulate that. I don't think there's any problem bringing the policy back in an April meeting rather than the next March meeting. It'll give us time for that survey for sure, say, hey, council and committee did this, this is the framework that got proposed, please give us your comments before the final policy comes, we can comment on that. If there's anything large that changes the framework that council's talked about this evening, we can certainly bring that back early enough. And I, and I don't think there's, the intake will still happen. I, you know, through that, through that survey, as councillor Willis said, that maybe there'll be more awareness of the availability of these funds. And I don't think we're, well, while it's a new policy, I don't think it's going to change the application of the grant program that much.
Are you done?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Oh, okay. We have another comment? Mayor?
Just, I just wanted to comment on some of the items that have been brought forward. I understand what councillor Willis was saying about the 50% funding waiting until the end. And if it's a shoestring budget for some of the organizations, that could be challenging. Taking it to the other side where we pay invoices as they come in, I think is swinging it all the way the other way. I'd like to see some suggestions of maybe something in between where instead of it's 50/50, 50/25, 25 or something like that. I guess what I'm looking at is something that is very easily understandable and not overly onerous on staff for accounting purposes. So sort of in the middle there somewhere, I think we could probably find some ground that would be very common. The other thing was, it was talked about the, the reserve fund. Personally, I would still like to see us maintain a perpetual fund. If there's a, I don't want to end up with so many funds that we're confused as what, what we're doing, but I do like the idea of the perpetual fund I always have. I believe that the impact from this and the resources that we're getting from it is our opportunity to be able to pay it forward into the, into the next generation. And so that's where I, I really believe in the perpetual fund, that once we're all off council and it might be, you know, I was going to say, we may not be here. Somebody could still be reaping the benefits, the community could be reaping the benefits of this fund. So I just like the idea of the perpetual fund being maintained as it was sort of originally presented for after the income has ended. And that's it. I already touched that last.
Thank you. Anyone else? You have one more?
Oh, would you like a motion?
Please do.
If I could clarify though, on the comments about the perpetual fund, so right now 15% goes into the perpetual fund. I was not saying that that should ever stop. It's just more if there's leftover funds this year that they roll over to next year. That was my only concern. So I would like to make a motion that the report from the Corporate Services Strategy and Innovation Department, March 12th, 2024, reframework for a new community grant policy be received. That staff consult by survey the community using the community engagement framework, that comments provided at the March 12th, 24, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting and comments from the public be referred to staff to incorporate into a draft community grant policy to be brought to the April 23rd, 2024 council meeting for consideration. That that policy include a minimum of 25% of renewable energy funds to go to the affected communities now and in future. And that is my motion.
The mayor? Any comments? Any comments? Council? Councillor Parks?
Just for clarification, the 25% for the affected area, is that in perpetuity or is that for the first year, like the first five years, that was originally from the solar agreement?
Thank you for the question. So the solar agreement reads as the first five years of a 20-year agreement, which is essentially 25%. So if it's, if it makes more sense to keep it consistent with the solar, then I would say the first five years of any community benefit agreement be allocated or be the minimum that's available to the affected communities now and also going forward if we get more projects. The only reason I said 25% is future agreements might not be 20 years long.
And do we have that clerk?
I can get it from councillor Willis.
Okay. We have a seconder. Councillor Bootrick, all in favor? Motion is carried. Last one on our agenda here is asset retirement obligations policy and staff will come forward. You have anything to add?
Basically, this is a new policy for the new accounting standard and if, other than that, there's not much else to add.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions? No questions? I just have one, just for my own clarification. When you say, let me try it here. So, so in asset retirement, are we talking, just for my own benefit, selling buildings, et cetera, and machinery? Or is it just referred to buildings, land, et cetera?
This would be any form of capital, whether it be equipment or a building or any, essentially any asset that the municipality owns. The best example would be look at is lead pipes in a place or asbestos in a building. And it may not necessarily mean sold, it may be we choose to demolition a building and have to deal with the remediation before demolition to rebuild on the site.
Okay, thank you. No questions? Do we have a recommendation from anyone? Your worship, please? Do we have a seconder? Councillor Willis? Any comments? Comments? No? Call the question, all in favor? Motion is carried. Next one, Committee of the Whole adjournment at 8:39 and we'll give it a, just a couple minutes to reset ourselves and move on.
Mr. Chair, you need a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Councillor Willis, seconded by the deputy. All in favor? Carried.
Okay, so we'll carry on with the remainder of the council meeting. We are at notice of motions and direct motions. Are there any notice of motions council wishes to present this evening? Being none, are there any direct motions council wishes to present this evening? Being none, consent agenda. Any member, before the motion to consider all items under the consent agenda is voted on, shall identify any items we wish to speak to and the matter shall be extracted from the consent agenda and be dealt with separately. Are there any items in the consent agenda which any member wishes to extract this evening? Being none, we have a recommendation. Do we have a mover to provide a motion this evening? Deputy mayor?
Through you, your worship, that items 15.1 to 15.2 in the consent agenda dated March 12th, 2024 be approved as presented and that the necessary action be taken.
So moved, do I have a seconder? Councillor Prodigy? Mover, any comments? Seconder? Any other members? Being none, call the question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Announcements? Are there any announcements this evening from members of council? Being none, do we have a motion for the confirmatory bylaw? Councillor Willis?
Pardon me, I move that bylaw 2024-41 to confirm the proceedings of council of Loyola Township be enacted and passed and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign and seal.
So moved, do we have a seconder? Councillor Parks? All in favor? Motion is passed. And we would entertain a motion to adjourn. Do we have a mover? Councillor Ennis?
So moved, seconded by councillor Parks. All in favor? Motion is passed, we are adjourned.